Good afternoon and welcome to those in the audience or watching online. Today is February 12, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call this work session of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Tonight, we will be holding public interviews for the three candidates who have applied to fill the board vacancy. This vacancy is due to the resignation of Director Mursal on January 7, 2025. In 2024, the HF 4772 Elections Bill included a new provision effective July 1, 2024, that states that if a school board vacancy occurs less than two years before the end of the term, no special election is required, and the vacancy can be filled by board appointment. The Board of Education received four applicants total, but one of the applicants lived just outside our district boundaries, so by law is ineligible to serve. This evening, we will be interviewing the three remaining candidates as follows. 6:30 PM Samantha Swenson, 7:30 PM Jen Boyko, 8:30 PM Tyler Saxy. In order to keep on schedule, we will get started with our first candidate Samantha Swenson. Welcome.
Hi.
I am Anna Werb, current Chair of the Board, and I would like to start by introducing the board members. We will start with Amory Anderson.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm just saying hi.
Oh.
Right? You were introducing?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking.
And Rachel McElson. Nice to meet you. Thank you for being here.
Scott Hume.
Abigail Alt, welcome.
Hello.
Now I'll share a brief overview of the interview process. We will begin by allowing you a brief opening statement, followed by nine questions. You will have five minutes to respond to most questions. You will have, you will be provided with an opportunity to ask questions of the board. You will find the questions posted on the screen behind us. Before we begin, I also want to share a brief overview of the selection process. Tomorrow, February 13, at our regular board meeting, when we reach the agenda item to appoint a new board member, I will ask board members if there is a nomination for the first applicant. Following a nomination, the Chair will then ask board members if there is a second for the same. If there is a second, the board members will then vote by roll call for the first applicant. The same process will be repeated for the remainder of the applicants. Once a clear winner receives a majority of votes, the board will take formal action on a resolution to appoint the applicant. The appointee will be sworn in during our regular Board of Education meeting on March 27, 2025, at 6:30 PM, and will join the board at the dais and begin their service that same evening. If there's a tie vote in which the board is deadlocked, the nomination process would be closed, and the board would reopen the application process and welcome all candidates to reapply. Now let's go ahead and begin. Samantha Swenson, at this time, you have five minutes to share an opening statement.
Okay. My name is Samantha Swenson. I generally go by Sam. I am, I've been a Burnsville resident for about four years now. I live in the North River Hills neighborhood, so I'm pretty sure all of you know who I am. I'm, I have four children. I've got a 13-year-old whose birthday is today. I've got an eight-year-old, a five-year-old, and a one-and-a-half-year-old. I, at this time, choose to homeschool my children. I've been homeschooling them since the pandemic. So my daughter has done third grade through seventh grade home with me, and my son started kindergarten, and he is now in third grade, and now my third child is doing kindergarten at home. And I have been married for going on about 10 years now, and my husband and I, we have really appreciated moving into the Burnsville community, and I am interested in becoming more involved with the, whether it's the school board or the city, or just getting more involved with the community.
Okay. Thank you. Well, let's begin with our questions now. So I'm going to begin with the first question, and that is... Oops. Where are our questions? Nope. Yeah. Okay. What qualities do you think are the most important in a school board member, and how do you reflect those qualities?
One of the most important qualities that I think a school board member needs to have is the ability to effectively communicate with the community. That would include students, parents, staff, and those surrounding and that live within the district boundaries. I think there are a lot of decisions that the school board makes, and a lot of those decisions affect hundreds, if not thousands, of people. And I think being able to openly communicate and effectively go about and explain the thought and reasoning behind the decisions that are made is an important key for a school board member.
Do you want to re-ask the second part of that question?
Uh, yeah. Sorry. I, hang on a second. I must have these in here somewhere.
Well, the second part of the question says, "How do you reflect those qualities?" Personally, I feel that communication is important. I have been one of, one of the faces in the North River Hills area when it comes to the Sioux Trail Elementary School sale, and I'm sure all of you are aware of that. If you're not, surprise, this is your face. I think that communication would have been a very important key in that, and I am, I think just being able to demonstrate how I have been an effective communicator with my own community is something that I can also bring to the table here.
I forget, I have to talk into the microphone. Sorry.
An awkward mic. Everybody else seems to kind of have...
We're sharing, so it's fine. How do you personally value public education, and what do you see as the value of public education in our community?
My thoughts on public education have drastically changed since the COVID pandemic. I never thought in a million years that I would be a mom who chose to homeschool my children, and here I am. I think that there are parents who can effectively put their children within the public education sector, and they, and everything goes well. I, on the other hand, have found that being home with my children and being able to have that one-on-one education with them has been absolutely life-changing. I would love to see more parental involvement in the parent when it comes to public education, and I think that there's a way for those gaps to be filled and have more involvement, more teaching between, it just doesn't stick with the four walls of a classroom, and it can go beyond that. When it comes to our community, a lot of people do not have the flexibility in their schedules. I mean, I know for myself, I am extremely blessed that I get the opportunity to stay home with my children, and not everybody has that, and I think that there is value in the public education world for those who don't have that ability. And I think that there's a way for a gap to be filled to strengthen the public education for all students.
All right. Number three, describe your understanding of the decision-making process for school boards.
I don't actually know a lot, so it would be something that I would have to come and learn. I do believe that learning is a lifelong thing. I did, this past fall, recently enrolled to go back to college to get my bachelor's in finance. That was also something I never thought I would do. 12, 13 years ago, when I left college, I left with my associate's degree, had my first child, began a career, and just assumed that I was good. And now that I'm home, I've realized that I could continue learning while I'm out of the workforce for an extended time. I think that because I would need to learn about the decisions that the school board would make, that, that puts me at a disadvantage. I do think that I will have to be, have time to think and analyze the decisions that I would have to make. And just to tap onto the next point here, what their questions is our approach to handling decisions that were made before you joined the board that I don't agree with. I know that there's, I mean, it's very obvious that I don't agree with the decision that the school board made to sell Sioux Trail Elementary without providing any public input. It was one of those private closed deals, and because of that, I do think that when it comes, going forward to any decisions that that would be made, I would likely have to excuse myself, as I believe that it would potentially be a conflict of interest, as I have openly voiced my opposition in that. And there's other decisions that have been made, such as budgets, and if I don't agree with them, I would do my best to understand why that decision was made in the first place. I would do my best to look at understanding the overall picture, and even if I don't agree with a position that the majority has taken, I still think that there is a way to move forward in future decision-making.
So as a board, we speak with one voice. The board has to make decisions where members of the community may have strong views on the subject being decided. Please describe your approach in sharing your views either in person or online outside of board meetings, you know, should you be on the board.
I think this is going to be something that communication's going to be key. If I am in opposition or for something that the majority is either in favor of or against, that going forward as, as a board, it is one voice, even if I am opposed or in favor of an opposite line. But with that, I think being able to share my thoughts would be acceptable. But I also would do my best in communicating why the decision was made the way it was. And that's going back again to a communication piece. Not everybody's going to agree. Everybody has different thoughts and opinions, and I think that's what makes the world beautiful, is that we do have those. I mean, if everybody thought alike, the world would be black and white, we wouldn't have any color. We wouldn't have any beauty. And so by having different views, being able to share individual thoughts, but again, going forward and being able to state with one voice and being able to understand that I may not fully agree with something, and here's the reasons why, but I will understand and do my best to back up.
All right. First, I think at the beginning, you said it was your son's birthday, so happy birthday to your son.
My daughter.
Daughter, sorry. Happy birthday to your daughter. My question for you is, if you could describe the difference from your perspective between governing and managing, specifically as it relates to a potential role on our, on our school board?
Governing, in my opinion, would be making a decision on behalf of others that you feel is the best. Managing would be taking all viewpoints into consideration, understanding the pros and cons for each decision, and making the, and going forward with managing and taking into account what would, what a decision or viewpoint, a thought, a just whatever is done, being able to manage would be hearing and understanding all and making the best decision as it would relate for everyone.
Tell me about in more detail how your background relates to the ability to oversee the organization, meaning the school district, especially as it relates to board governance?
I don't have a large background in any type of management. When I was working, I worked at CBRE as a cash management analyst, and then other roles within the organization. I was not in direct role of managing others. However, in most recent years, I have been managing, you know, being a homeschooling mom, schedules, and all making decisions on behalf of a family unit. And I think that because of that, I have a unique perspective. I will have a different way, a different opportunity to bring things to the table that some of you who may work a corporate job, a nine-to-five type thing, wouldn't have. I have different communities that I belong to within, whether it's homeschooling, sports activities with young kids. I attend a UCFE class here once a week with my two younger daughters, and just having those different viewpoints, I would be able to help bring a different perspective to the school board.
School district finances are complex, and this board has had to face many challenging budgetary decisions over the years. What would your approach to this be?
This is a tricky one. Knowing that 191 had declining enrollment last decade and will likely continue to decline, there's going to be an increase in finances, you know, with just overall inflation and how things have been in this economy, that because of losing additional students, there's going to be portions of the budget that may not balance, and there's going to be different ways of going about and looking at, are there cuts that need to be made? Are there different ways of going forward with finding or, you know, whether it's asking for a levy or looking into options to obtain different financing? But I think that going forward and being, you know, it's going to be one of those items where I would want to be able to do my best to understand every budget item line by line. And that will, that's something that will definitely take a large time commitment. I'm jumping into number seven here a bit. But that's something that, as a school board member, if I were to be appointed into this position, it would be something I would do everything I can to attempt to understand where everything is coming from, where everything's going. I have worked in, a bit in the finance field before this, before I stayed home with my children, so I've had a bit of work with budgets in the past. I know I manage my own family's personal finances and file taxes and all that fun stuff that you do at the beginning of every year. And I know for our family personally, we have my husband's income, all of the expenses, and what's left over. And if something in that expense category increases, either we've got to look at increasing my husband's income or cutting something else out. And so being able for me to review everything line by line when it comes to the budget, and I understand that'll be something I might have to undertake in my own personal time, but that would be something I would be dedicated to looking through and making my own personal recommendations.
Thank you. From your perspective, what is the time commitment for board members?
I did see that online there was a 20 to 40-hour commitment per month. My guess for me personally is that from now until summer, I noticed that there aren't any school board meetings over the summer, so I have no idea if you guys meet or not and how that looks. I just looked at what I do know, which is the coming up school board meeting dates that I've seen on the calendar. I know for me, I will have to get clever with my time. Everybody has 24 hours in a day, and how we manage those 24 hours is going to look different for everybody. I know there's some people out there who get, can go off of four hours of sleep and take the other 20 and tackle a lot of things. I know for me, I'm someone who likes my sleep. I, if I get under six hours, I'm not going to be a good wife, mom, and friend, and all the other hats that I have the next day. So for me, I know that my 24 hours in a day is going to be a lot less than some, and I've got a lot of hats that I wear and a lot of commitments that I am a part of. I will have to look at my personal calendar and decide what things need to wait, what things can I continue with. I will have to get creative and do, you know, different types of planning, especially with home management, you know? That might look mean, I take a day and do meal prep, because I know that Tuesday night and Wednesday night, I'm going to have to be looking at items for the upcoming meeting that would be, you know, the following Thursday or whatnot. So I know the time commitment can be a bit much, and I anticipate that for the first few months, it will be a lot more until I'm more comfortable and understanding of my roles and responsibilities as a board member, and that is something that I am prepared to do.
Thank you. In under two minutes, what would your elevator pitch be for ISD 191 to encourage families to enroll in the district?
That's going to be a tough one. My, for me personally, when I moved into Burnsville, I had a couple of friends ask me, "Are you sure? What if you don't continue homeschooling? Are you going to enroll them into the nearby school district?" And that was a tough one, because at the time, when I moved into the district, I did not have the best, 191 did not have the best reputation by word of mouth. Because of that, I would want to look at what can we do as a school board to show that our school district is a school district that our families should be enrolling in? There is, looking at the overall enrollment numbers, there is a large percentage of students that live within 191 boundaries that open and roll elsewhere. I think from one of the things that I looked at recently, it was over 3,600 students. That's a lot of students, and that's a lot of families that are choosing to look elsewhere. And I think as a school board and as a school district as a whole, we need to look at why and be transparent in those reasons why. If parents choose to enroll their children elsewhere, and they give a list of reasons why, as a school district and as a school board, we need to look at what are we doing, and how can we change that perspective for those families?
All right. So what questions do you have of us, and any final thoughts that you have us before we end the interview?
I do have a couple of things here. So as we, as I just mentioned, that the enrollment for the school district has rapidly decreased in the past decade, and nearly 3,500 of those students open and roll elsewhere. We have one charter school that's planning on moving into district boundaries this fall, and a second one that's planning on moving middle school just north of the district boundaries with the plans of having K-12 education. What's the district's plan at this time to handle that continued decrease? And how could I, as a potential school board member, help with that?
Well, I...
May I? Yes, go ahead.
I think there's a little context in here. In terms of the declining enrollment, there are many different reasons for declining enrollment. And actually, if you look over time, it's, there was, there has been a decline, it has plateaued. In terms of what we are doing to retain our students, you can hear us talking at board meetings about, you know, the communications department and telling the stories of our families, hearing from our families directly, hearing the positive stories from our students, because people don't necessarily want to hear from adults, they want to hear from the kids, what is their lived experience in the school. If you were to be selected to be a board member, I would say, you know, we are all, we all see each other as ambassadors of the district, and so putting that hat on to figure out, how can you two be an ambassador for 191?
Okay. The second question I have is, I noticed, looking over, what I found about the district's budget is, overall, most of the budget goes towards staff, staff and the various benefits, like health, insurance, dental, that kind of thing. If there, as there's continual declines in enrollment, what concerns do you have as a board when it comes to the overall budget in the coming years?
Go ahead, Scott.
I mean, I think you, you kind of touched on it when you said 80% of the budget goes to people. So, yeah, anytime we have to look at cutting significantly from the budget, it has to be, it has to, a large chunk of it has to be at the expense of people, unfortunately, which means people are losing their jobs. So that's always going to, a huge concern anytime we're looking at how the budget might be impacted by decisions.
The next question I have here is, when Metcalf Middle School and Sioux Trail were selected to close, it was noted at that time that there was not an intent to sell those properties. As we've clearly seen over the last couple of weeks, that has changed, and negotiations with developers have gone on with both of those properties. The neighboring community had no idea that Sioux Trail Elementary was even being considered as a property for sale, leaving a lot of people in that neighborhood feeling that the district has lacked in communication efforts. What is the plan moving forward to strengthen those efforts to the nearby community?
So there was communication. There was many work groups and focus groups that met prior to the school's closing. I actually attended them myself. I also went to the board listening sessions when they were talking about closing the schools. I actually advocated to not close Sioux Trail. I actually advocated to not close Sioux Trail. We've had many meetings and communications, they've all been on our website. Nobody likes to close schools, it's a very difficult conversation to have.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I understand the reasons why the schools were chosen to close. I'm curious, though, why wasn't there any community involvement when it came to the sale of the properties? And how are you guys planning on going forward with that to increase the communication with the neighboring community?
Well, we can't have, like, there's certain stipulations as far as sales of properties. Some of those things can be discussed openly and some of them cannot. So once agreements have been made to purchase a property, then those things can be disclosed. But as far as, I'm not sure if you're asking if people can have opinions about if it's sold or not because I guess I'm not clear on what you're asking.
I'm just asking, it felt like the community was kind of blindsided. And my question was, how are you guys going to prevent that type of thing in the future?
I feel like we were communicating to people. We put, we put things out on our website. People were, I mean, people can come and listen to our board meetings. They know that we're talking about the sale. It's not, it's public information. So I don't know how else you're supposed to communicate it to people. That's, I mean, we haven't hit anything. It's our public record, anyone can come to our meetings and listen to us discuss the district's business. If they're, you know, if they want to reach out and talk to, you know, if they want to send emails to the board, we're completely open and responsive. Dr. Battle's responsive.
Okay.
So.
Is there a way that, as a district, we could strengthen communications with the community?
We work, we have many conversations about this all the time, yes.
Moving on. Safety continues to be a concern for parents who have children attending public schools. In March 2024, there was a viral video regarding a bullying incident at a middle school in 191 district. Can you identify specific actions that the school board has done to specifically address how potential incidents in the future would be handled and to ensure students are safe?
Do you want to?
Yeah, unless.
Well, I mean, I was just going to say that these are all things that we take very seriously in our district, and we are always made aware. I mean, this is communication between the board and the superintendent, which she keeps us abreast of anything that happens in the district. We have protocols that we follow, we have the student handbook that outlines disciplinary measures. We work with the law enforcement in our community. We have very strong relationships with all of these, all of our, you know, the emergency people in our community that support us. If there's anything that's illegal or anything that's, you know, that's something that we need their support in. So there's going to be, you know, that type of stuff happens in every district. But, you know, we have the guidelines in place and the protocols that we follow, so.
And also to add on to that, it's in a constant state of review by Dr. Battle and her team. The board also has had closed sessions. Because of course, when we're talking about safety and security, there are certain things that cannot be discussed in public. But rest assured, the members of this board and Dr. Battle and her team have had very deep conversations about safety and security in our schools. And the trust in Dr. Battle and her team to take the board's deliberations, conversations, take the appropriate steps, and keep us informed. So it happens, you just may not be aware of it because of the nature of the process.
Can I just add one yes and?
Yes.
And that's, since you mentioned a specific incident, you know, there may be, there are times due to confidentiality laws and such that you may know that X happened because of a video somebody posted on TikTok or whatever.
Right.
But we can't tell you what the consequence was due to confidentiality and student privacy data and things like that. So yes, we have policies in place, we have procedures in place, and those are followed when there are situations that happen.
Okay. And then just a couple of questions for you guys as individuals. I want to know, what is the most challenging part of being a board member?
I'm just laughing because Rachel and I have only been board members for one.
I was going to say, you guys are kind of new, so. But I know the other four of you have been here for a while, so I want to know what are some of the challenges that you've had or the most challenging?
I think, I mean, you haven't specifically said this, but I think you've hinted at it, that sometimes we have to make decisions that are maybe upsetting to our friends and our neighbors and our colleagues and sometimes our family members. And that's probably the toughest part, is knowing that you have to make a decision that's the right decision for the 7,000-plus students and all of the employees of the district and the families, even if it's going to really be disappointing to certain friends, neighbors, colleagues, and family members. Because it's everything you, every decision you make, I said this one year, every time we have to cut a program or cut an activity, even if only three kids are in that activity, that's somebody's favorite activity. It's something that gets them to go to school in the morning, is that activity that we had to cut because there were only three kids. So that's the hardest part for me.
And my response is in a similar vein. It's, our job is to be present, make decisions on behalf of our students, as well as our staff, and take into account our families and the community. And it's very hard, unless you're in the midst of it, to really understand all the moving parts. Even though we're there every two Thursdays of the month and we have committee meetings, the one night plus work sessions and retreats, you would have to follow it, you know, follow us nonstop to be able to see the intricacies of school board work and working with administration. And it is heartbreaking. There have been some very difficult decisions that have been made. And I think about, you know, the staff that we lose. I think about, you know, the students and the families that we hear from. And at the end of the day, our job is to make sure that we are shepherding the district forward and our good stewards of the taxpayers' trust and money. And education funding is not what it could be. And so we are constantly playing a game of catch-up. Setting aside declining enrollment, there's any, all districts, I think it's not all, but most, most districts continue to find themselves playing a game of catch-up because of education funding. And it's a labor of love because I care about our students, I care about our staff, I care about our families, and I want to do what's right.
For me, I guess I would say, you know, you, I'll just be honest. You know, you come in as a school board member and you think you're going to do all these things and change everything, and you have like these big hopes and dreams. But it's not all that, you know? You come in and then you realize, you know, you do have to, you know, make those decisions as a group. But what's hard is that you see it's a lot harder, some things are a lot harder than you thought, too. Like, then it's like, oh, yeah, you have to think about like, you know, fixing up buildings and making sure there's enough money to, you know, you know, pay for this or pay for that. And, you know, thinking about when you can't get enough, you know, staffing for, you know, special ed or, I mean, there's just all these things and you're just kind of like, wow, there's all these things, I just had no idea what's going on in the school district. And then you're kind of like, wow, I feel like I wish I could do more. Like, it's, and then you, I don't want to get, feel like disheartened, but then you're just kind of like, it's almost overwhelming and you're, but you're like, then it makes you want to stay in it because you're like, I feel like there's so much work to do. But it makes you, it's rewarding. But in the same sense, it is challenging because you feel like you have this weight because you're kind of like, I'm here to try and help my district because there's all these needs. But you don't really see it until you come in and you start, you get on the school board. But I have to say, you know, I really loved this district before I got on the school board, but I love it even more now. It just makes me appreciate it even that much more. Just seeing all those other things that you, you thought, it's like, looking from the outside, looking in, it's a different viewpoint. But then once you get on the inside, it is just completely different. Like, just, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's hard work, you know? That's what it is. It's hard work because you're not just looking at like, you know, the fun part is, you know, getting to see all the student achievement. But then there's the difficult stuff with, you know, selling properties and cutting stuff because of budgetary things. So there's the downside and the upside.
Hi, I'm Leslie Chester. I'm sorry, I was delayed to come in. Maybe I'll preface that one of the challenges about being a board member is juggling the demand of some of the board meetings with your work professional life, which is what interfered, it had an overlap, so I apologize. But Scott and Abigail and Anna really reflected pretty much almost everything that I would say. I think the other addition is, is really the struggle is with things that are out of our control with finances. So if the education dollars aren't keeping up with inflation, it's out of our control. So then we're, we have to make decisions that are hard. They not only impact our own children in the district, they impact their classmates, their, you know, other, you know, all families. And it's just hard to make those decisions. I, you know, I'll still say, one of the hardest things that I've faced so far was determining three schools to close. I didn't know I was going to ever, didn't even think of that coming onto this board. And it was, that was, that's up there in some of the worst things I've had.
That's a hard decision to make, then, you know, pandemic that hits and.
Yeah, that was, that was hard. That was a, I, I'm still to this day impacted by it in how I feel of how it impacted so many, you know, families in our district, you know, too. And so it's that, it's, yeah, funding for special ed not being done at the federal level. So, I mean, how much can we do pushing our legislators, you know, which is one of the things that I enjoyed helping bring back onto the school board was a legislative committee realizing, can we do something to address the things out of our control? But there's still challenges, we're still, we still face, like all districts, having to make tough decisions when it becomes a fiduciary responsibility. Making sure that we're adhering to the goals and the vision of the district with the most minimal impact on our students. But also being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers.
So I know Anna's touched a bit about it here, but I want to hear from the other three. What is the most rewarding piece of being a school board member?
Giving out diplomas for graduation. Being able to shake the hands of our seniors as they move on to their next journey. Attending all of the graduations, not just, not just BHS. I think, I mean, they're all my favorite.
Everyone, your ad is your current favorite.
Yeah. But, you know, I love, I love, you know, adult basic ed, I love transitions, I love alternative high schools. They're all unique and it's just a joy seeing that the impact their experience on the district has had on them and where they're going to go next. It's just exciting and, you know, that's the highlight for me.
And the unique stories that we are gifted with at the time of those celebrations. There's so many wonderful stories that come out. And I think that's what really makes the year-end celebrations avid, too. We forgot avid.
Oh, yeah, avid, yes.
That, you know, we have awesome students and we have awesome, caring staff. And to have students and staff generously share their stories of success with us and the challenges that they faced before they reached graduation, it's just, it's just a blessing. And that's, that's it up.
Yeah, well, that and at the board table, now that we brought back the school reports, those are also up there, too. Where the schools get to highlight and shine for the evening and we get to hear more and our community gets to hear more from a glimpse.
I completely agree with all of that, so I won't repeat what they said. That's my main answer, but I'll just add one other thing that I was thinking of as they were talking, is being on the school board is often a very thankless job. So every now and then, out of the blue, a friend or a teacher or somebody will just say, thank you for being on the school board, I'm glad you're there. And that always makes my day, every single time that happens. So I'm just going to throw that in.
I'll be quick with the next couple here. So what would you identify as the most important piece of your role? If you had to just pick one thing that is the most important that you do in your role as a school board member, what would that, what would that be?
Governance.
It's the first word that popped into my mind, of course.
I mean, if it was to drill down, it'd be like setting policy.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really that. It's, I don't want to speak for anybody else, so feel free to correct me, but it's setting the policies, setting the direction, setting the overall budget for the district so that the superintendent and her staff can do the day-to-day work.
And then I'll ask you two individually because you're two brand new, and then I'll address the second half of it to you four. What made you both consider an election campaign? And what was your driving factor to be on the board?
Do you want to go first?
Sure.
I, it was a way to serve. I, and really contribute to the community. I think that local government is the way to have the most impact in people's lives and that having an impact on students and the families in our community is the most, is the best way to have the most impact and continue improving and driving the success of 191 that I really believed in the district and I wanted to be a part of continuing to have it move forward in the best way possible.
I will say, kind of a personal experience, I'm a parent in the district. I'm also extremely involved in our PTO. I volunteer at our school through reading corps. So I have like a lot going on with the district and I love it. And there's a group of other parents that, throughout the district, that we started a advocacy group to help parents navigate the district and things. And during those discussions, we said, you know, it would be really great if we had a voice on the school district board. And I happen to be the person who had, you know, Um, and, uh, I happen to be the person who had, you know, no, no serious day job, like nine to five, uh, and, and who, you know, I had the means to do it. So, uh, so I did it.
Okay. And then you four have been serving for quite some time. What makes you continue? What's the reasons for continuing? Or why do, I mean, you guys could, at the end of your time serving, you could be, I think I'm good. I'm ready to quiet down or do something different or take up a hobby like backyard chickens or something.
Ugh.
But what drives you guys to keep coming back, to keep going through? For me, it's the students. Um, I, I have to, now, I, I, I won't go too much into everything, but, um, dare, dare I even say it now? I, my platform was D E I when I, when I first ran. Um, just wanting to make, ensure students were all, um, treated equally. Um, that was important to me. Um, and I was on the PTO at the time. But, um, then once you get involved in it, it's just becomes passionate work. You know, you just want to feel like you, you just want to keep seeing it through.
Um, for me, um, initially, um, there were several people that, um, said that I should run for school board to bring special ed voice to the table and having a son with, um, special needs. And so that was initially why I ran. Uh, why I choose to stay, um, is for our students. Uh, it's for, you know, seeing all our students in our mission and their accomplishments. Um, it's also adding, you know, I mean, at the time it was, you know, can we get that? Can we get that, um, um, the words escaping me are, um, where we went to the, to get the.
Not just the exemption?
The exemption done. That was one of, one of my unfinished business codes of business was the exemption. Um, and, um, keep continuing to deepen our legislative voice, um, with our legislators and then, um, helping the done make a greater impact for our district and other districts in the state.
Yeah, I ran, uh, when I ran, well, when I was first appointed, um, this was 11 years ago. Um, I was a stay-at-home mom. I had the time and the means to be able to make the school board my day job. And, um, I saw wonderful things happening in the district. I also saw areas that could be improved and my husband and I agreed that, um, that that would be our, our way to give back. Um, I stay because there's never a dull moment despite the challenges, despite the, the heartache. Um, there's so many ways that, that we as board members can do really positive things on behalf of our students and that's what really keeps me energized. Um, the legislative work, you know, whether it's at the state or at the federal or local level. Um, you know, seeing, being able to celebrate all the different ways in which our students are successful, right? There are academics, there's growth, there's, you know, seeing them graduate from the high school, um, with a path, whether it's college or tech school or career, you know. I, the district has made so many strides, um, in my time on the board that, um, it just, it gives me a lift and I really appreciate, um, working with the group that, that I work with, um, as well as the students and families.
I keep going last, so I have, I'm going to say ditto, ditto, ditto. When I, when I was elected a little over six years ago, um, at the time I had, well, one had just graduated. I had two kids in the district and one who had just graduated. Um, and my youngest is a senior this year. So we are, we, all three of our kids have gone all the way through the Burnsville school system. We moved here the spring before my oldest son started kindergarten from Eagan. Um, so we chose to live in Burnsville in part because of what, what we had heard about the schools. Um, so a different experience than what others have had perhaps. Um, and we had heard that they're very good schools and that, yes, sometimes the reputation is maybe not what it could be, but the people who actually have kids there are very happy there. And that's very much been our experience. Um, all three of our kids have had amazing experiences, amazing opportunities, and they credit those experiences to, uh, being students in the 191 school district. Um, so for me as a parent, I'm proud about that. Um, for me as a school board member, I'm even more proud about it. Um, also, even though we only hear a small fraction of the 7,000-plus stories in our district on any given year, the stories that we do hear, um, are definitely inspiring and impactful and, and seeing the impact that our work has on the lives of the students who live in our district, um, is definitely a big part of why I keep coming back every, every other Thursday and all the other meetings in between.
All right, well, we actually have to wrap this up, so.
It's perfect. I ran out of questions.
Okay. Um, so thank you for your time. We appreciate your commitment to service and interest in this position. Please note that board action fulfilling the vacancy will occur during the regular board meeting on February 13th, 2025. You do not need to be present for this meeting and can watch the results online. However, in the event that the board is deadlocked during the selection process, you may wish to be present for additional follow-up questions. After the resolution to fill the vacancy is passed, there is a 30-day waiting period. The selected candidate will begin their service on March 27th, 2025. Again, thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I have a prior obligation tomorrow, so I won't be able to make the school board meeting.
Okay.
But if for whatever reason you choose to reach me, I am available by phone. I don't know if that's something that you guys would do, but if there was a reason, I am available by phone, but I need to be in person with two of my girls tomorrow evening because my husband's got the other two, so.
The old divide and conquer.
Yep, we'll get there.
I know it well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I think, let's just take a five-minute break still.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we're good to take a five-minute break. Yep.
Hi.
Hello, welcome. I should say, welcome Jen, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm Anna Werbe, I'm the current board chair. And I would like to start by Andrew's and the rest of the board members, so we'll start with Ann Marie Anderson.
I'm Ann Marie Anderson.
I'm Leslie Chester.
Abigail Alt.
Scott Hume.
And Rachel Jefferson.
There you go.
Good idea. Thought of that during the first one.
Okay, so I'm going to start by sharing a brief overview of the interview process. We will begin by allowing you a brief opening statement, followed by nine questions. You have five minutes to respond to most questions and will also be provided with an opportunity to ask questions of the board at the very end. You will find the questions posted on the screen behind us. Before we begin, I also want to share a brief overview of the selection process. Tomorrow, February 13th, at our regular board meeting, when we reach the agenda item to appoint a new board member, I will ask board members if there's a nomination for the first applicant. Following a nomination, the chair will then ask board members if there is a second for the same. Ooh, there's a bug. Where did that come from? Sorry. If there's a second, I will ask if there are any other nominations. Once nominations are complete, we will vote by roll call. This same process will be repeated for the remainder of the applicants. Once a clear winner receives a majority of votes, the board will take formal action on a resolution to appoint the applicant. The appointee will be sworn in during our regular Board of Education meeting on March 27th, 2025, at 6:30 PM and will join the board at the dais and begin their service that same evening. If there's a tie vote in which the board is deadlocked, then the nomination process would be closed and the board would reopen the application process and welcome all candidates to reapply. That's not true, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
That is right.
If we're deadlocked, then we reapply.
You have to start it over again.
Right, but I thought we were going to...
If after all the conversations were still deadlocked.
Oh, okay, okay, that's what I was trying to clarify. Okay, gotcha.
Now, let's go ahead and begin. Jen, at this time, you have five minutes to share...oh, wait, sorry. Yeah, oh, at this time, you have five minutes to share an opening statements. I'm sorry, I'm losing my mind right now. Go ahead and share an opening statement. Thank you.
Well, my name is Jen Boyko and I have been a Burnsville resident for 20 years in June. Our children, both of our children were born here in Burnsville. Our daughter is a recent 2024 graduate of Burnsville High School and our son is a junior at Burnsville High School. That's probably the most important part about me, is being a mom and being a wife. But the other half of my life is that I have been an educator, a teacher, for 24 years, 25 if you count this year. So, I spent 15 years teaching English Language Arts, not English Language Arts, sorry, English Language Learners, so I worked with ESL students for 15 years and I currently teach 3rd grade. I think one of the things that is surprising is that I teach in Eden Prairie, but my children attend Burnsville. And I have many people in this community who ask me, "Why? Why don't your kids go to Eden Prairie?" And my answer and my response to them is that the diversity found in this district is the reality of our world and I want our children to have that experience. I don't want them to be in a community where the color of their skin affords them privileges that they don't necessarily deserve or earn. And so for me, that is my passion around this district and that is why we have spent so many years living here and believing in this district and putting our children through this district while we watch our neighbors pull their kids out of this district. And so I feel that this, for me, is kind of like where I need to be and it's my passion and I will continue to believe in this district regardless of what, anything happens tonight or in the future, this district is a great district and what we offer kids is amazing and it's something that you don't get in Eden Prairie. So, that's kind of my opening, I guess, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I'll kick off the interview with the first question. What qualities do you think are the most important in a school board member and how do you reflect those qualities?
I think first and foremost, the biggest quality in a school board member is to listen, to listen to everyone involved, whether it be board members, parents, teachers, students, community members. You have to listen and you have to listen without judgment and without putting your own perspective into what they're trying to say. And I think that that is like the key to being a good member of this board. I think that another key is your willingness and your open to stand up and just advocate and say how great this district is and to point that out to anybody who is willing to listen to your voice. And so, how do I reflect these qualities? Well, I spend the majority of my day listening to people. They're usually eight and nine years old, but I spend a lot of time listening. And so I've gotten really good at not judging what they're saying and trying to ask questions to clarify what they're trying to say. So, I think that that quality is something that I carry forth from professional life, that ability to listen to people and not to judge them and to try and finding and sometimes try and find purpose when they're eight and nine years old. So, but I think for me, that's how I reflect those qualities. And that, you know, I kind of also am kind of that cheerleader in the background, expressing to my neighbors and anyone who will listen that, "Yeah, our kids went here, our kids are great and they had a great experience, they've had great educations and I would not consider sending them anywhere else." So that quiet kind of cheerleader part of me too, is I think how I reflect those qualities.
Thank you. How do you purposely, purposely? Let me try it again. How do you personally value public education and what do you see as the value of public education in our community?
We only have five minutes? Well, I'm an educator and I'm an educator in a public school system. And I believe in the public school system so deeply. We are one of the few countries in the world who offer all students the opportunity for a free education K-12. That says a lot about what we value as a country and as a system. I think that the public education system is just the most phenomenal gift we can give our kids. And for me, being in it and seeing the day-to-day growth of my own personal 3rd graders, the power that it has is tremendous. And you don't, you can't overlook the little things that happen in a school. I think of one of my little 3rd graders who came to me the other day and he and I had had a bad day and it was so obvious that we were both in the wrong and I looked at him and I said, "You know," I said, "We've both had a bad day." And he looked at me with tears in his eyes and he said, "It's all my fault, Mrs. Boyko." And I said, "No, honey, it's not. It's my fault too." And I apologized to him and the look on his face, I don't think any adult has ever apologized to him. And so I think that is powerful. We teach our kids those lessons inside of a classroom and inside of a public school system, we're allowed that opportunity to teach our kids so much more than reading or math or science or anything else. We teach them how to be good human beings by our examples. And that's the power of public education. So, for me, the value to our community is that ability to send your child to a caring place with other adults who love them and value them and see them. That has incredible value to our kids and to our community. And so, I just can't, I can't express it all. It's that gift we give them is something that can never be taken away from them. You don't learn how to, you don't unlearn how to read, you don't unlearn how to do math. We give them those gifts, but we give them so much more in our compassion and in our time and in our effort to help them see bigger pictures and how to be good people. So, that's the value for me.
Thank you.
Describe your understanding of the decision-making process for school boards and then also what would be your approach to handling decisions that were made before you joined the board that you do not agree with?
So, from my understanding, and I will confess it's limited, I have an understanding on the opposite side. From my understanding, the board decides kind of like the big picture things. And then, when those things come up, they're presented to the board from district people, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and then decisions are made with that information given to us. And then, the district employees then take those decisions and they get them out to the schools and the people who need to know those decisions. So, what I understand it to be then is a lot of handling of the big picture things. Where does certain money get funneled to for certain activities? And then making sure that the administration, the superintendent are hitting the goals that are set for them by the board. So, this is my understanding of it. I will confess it's very limited in that regard. So, how would I handle decisions that have been made before that I don't agree with? I think, I go back to that big thing of listening, to understanding why the decision was reached. And if you can get to the heart of why that decision was reached, then I think you can find commonality within your own belief systems. So, trying to find that point at which you can agree with a part of it. It might not be completely my opinion or what I think, but finding that commonality and finding that piece between the two opposing points of view, I think, would be key for me. And I also believe in the sense of not everything that's decided is the way I want it to be, no matter how much I think it should be. And my 3rd graders will tell you that I always think it should be, but you know, you have to sometimes accept things that can't be changed and you have to then be that voice who says, "Okay, this is what we're doing. Not my, wasn't my choice, but I'm going to support this and I'm going to follow through with this and I'm going to, you know, do the things that need to be done to make sure that this decision is implemented correctly." So, thank you.
So, as a board, we speak as one board. And the board has to make decisions where members of the community may have strong views on the subject being decided. And if you could please describe your approach in sharing your views, either in person or online, outside of board readings, you know, should you be a board member?
So, I think that... One of the important things, and you see this, I think, everywhere is, you know, if... Give me a second. I don't know if I have this quite right, worded quite the right way. I don't think it's so much as sharing my views, as sharing the decisions that the board has made. And telling people, "These are the reasons why we chose this and here are reasons why." And regardless of what my views are, that is irrelevant to the process of this board. What I think happens here, it has to stay in this room. And whatever decision is made by the board, it's my responsibility and my job to make sure that when I go out and I communicate with members of the community, that I am communicating that message to them. And so, you have to set aside your own personal opinions and your own kind of personal biases in a way and say that, you know, "This was a board decision, this is what we decided and here's the reasons why." And know that people will not agree with everything and that's okay, but you have to have that respectful dialogue and understand that, you know, "Hey, I understand your point of view, I do, but here is where we are and here is the decision we made." So.
So, my question for you will be, if you could just help describe the difference from your perspective between governance and management, specifically as it relates to a potential role as a member of the school board. And then, as you can see, there's a follow-up question that I'll ask after you do the first part.
So, to me, governing is that kind of, I'm going to use an analogy. Governing is like the umbrella that sits on top of the management portion. So, as a governing body, you know, there are decisions that are made and then the management piece comes in at the people who are holding the handle of the umbrella. That's their job to get those messages out and to manage the details of everything. So, for me, that's kind of how I view them, as kind of this governing is the top of your umbrella and then the managing is that handle that you hold on to and the handle are the people who are doing the details and digging into that work. And, but the governing part of it is the people who are making the broader decisions. So.
Thank you. Could you explain in more detail how your background relates to the ability to oversee the school district organization, especially as it relates to board governance?
Well, I think that in my background, I manage a lot, but I think there's also a time in which I govern things and I have to watch my kids do the work and not manage them. They have to make their own decisions. And so, one of, one of the things that pops into my mind is I started using a new approach to teaching math and it's less teacher talk and more student work. And so, when I do this, I'm always surprised, I get the kids up, they're at what boards, they're moving around, they're solving problems, they're thinking, they're working in small groups and I'm always surprised at how little I talk. Because it's just like, I walk over and I ask a question and I don't give an answer, I just go, "Oh, so what do you think?" And then I get to walk away. And I think that that, for me, that is kind of that difference between governing and managing. When I'm managing, I'm doing most of the talking. When I'm governing, I'm standing back and then them dig into the work and do that. And so, my role as a teacher really, there are points at which I do bull, but some of the funnest points of my day is when I just get to stand back and throw out that question, "Well, I don't know, what do you think?" And they go, "What?" And so, you know, that's, I mean, that part of it, for me, I think relates really to kind of what you guys do as a board, in that you're making some decisions and then you're kind of saying, "Oh, so, I don't know, what do you think? How should we do this? How should it roll out? What should it look like?" And then the people who are making those decisions then get to kind of step back and be like, "Oh, okay, how's that work?" And so, that's kind of how I see how my background kind of connects to that and that way of looking at governing versus managing. So.
Thank you.
School district finances are complex and as this board has had to face many challenges budgetary decisions over the years, what would your approach be to a challenging budget and school board, school finance?
Yeah, school finance is complex, that's an understatement. And I think, you know, looking at budgetary challenges, I think that we're going to be seeing more from what I'm understanding, but I think that the biggest thing is to really step back and to say, when you're making those decisions, how does this impact the children? How is this decision affecting their educations and their abilities to learn and develop and grow as people? So, if you, if you approach every budgetary decision, kind of that lens, because the kids, I mean, the kids are why we're here, that's why we're here, that's our job. And so, if you look at it through their lens and you look at it as, "How is this impacting the kids?", then I think you can, you're going to make some tough decisions, but I think as long as you keep the kids at the forefront of that conversation, I think that that will help us make the best decisions possible in very difficult, challenging ways. So, for me, I think that approach to always keep your eye on the kids is the key and being really sure that what we're doing is in their best interests. So.
From your perspective, what is the time commitment for board members?
Well, from my perspective, I would say that there's, there's a time commitment in the meeting schedule. I know that there are specific board meetings and I'm thinking, I think, twice a month, but there could be more. So, you know, I would say probably three to four hours of board meeting a month. And then I would also think that the bigger time commitment is the necessity to be out in the community and to be talking to community members. And to be involved with that aspect of it, I think, is probably the bigger time commitment. You know, you've got to go to the parades and the festivals and just be out at the different events and talking to people and doing that kind of like PR work, you know, that is so important in this position. So I think, you know, for that, the time commitment becomes different. So I think when I talk time commitment, I think two different things. The time that I spend in, that you would spend in a board meeting, but also time that you would give to being that active participant in the community and talking to people in the community. So, I can't, I don't have a good answer for that, I guess.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, so you've kind of already set us up for this question in your, in your opening statement. In under two minutes, what would your elevator pitch be for 191 to encourage families to enroll in the district?
This is a beautiful district and the diversity in this district makes us stronger and it makes us better and it gives us perspectives that we don't always hear in our own personal lives. And it is a phenomenal district with teachers who love our kids and who are committed 100% to doing the best that they can for them. You know, I would, I would also point out that, you know, little things in the district, we are the only district south of the metro, in south of the river in the metro, that has an orchestra program at the high school, the only district who has that. That's awesome, that's amazing, that's an opportunity for our kids. We have some phenomenal things going on at the high school. I have a son on the swim and dive team who is, I watch them every meet and I will tell you, every meet this year they've lost, but every meet, those boys have been at the opposite end of the pool cheering for the other team as well as ours. Those are the lessons I want my kids to learn and those are lessons that this district teaches. And those are the things that I think are key to keeping our kids in this district. They, you don't know what we have until you get here and we have so much to offer kids and so much to give them and so much to show them, you know? And I just have a small fraction of what this district does. And I think that you got to get your kids in Burnsville. You gotta, you just gotta. So.
Thank you.
So, what questions do you have of us? Any final thoughts that you have for us before we end the interview?
I am so intrigued by that question of time commitment because I really didn't have any clue what the time commitment would be.
So, since I asked it, I'll start the answer. It says that it's 20 to 40 hours per month.
Okay.
It is what you put into it. I have never been able to have it be just 20 to 40 hours a month. And we do like more than two, three hours of meetings. We do meet twice, you know, twice a month typically for our regular board meetings. We have an evening of committee meetings and then there are work sessions and retreats in addition to school assignments and getting out into our schools and the community. So, it, there's the bare minimum and then there's the rest.
I would say that, I mean, I think Ann Marie and I, you know, have a unique perspective as being new and so we're kind of seeing this. And I would say, you know, it's been a month, month and a half now and it just takes a little bit of time to kind of get into a rhythm and get into a schedule of, you know, you want to be checking your email and everything on a regular basis and you're, you know, got to get into that routine of, you know, looking at the board book and preparing and really researching and looking at everything and studying everything, you know, the week before the board meeting and, you know, that's, that's, and you've got to get into this rhythm and into this just kind of habit of how you incorporate that time into the rest of your schedule. Because it definitely is more than just the meetings, it's the prep for those meetings and it's the training so that, you know, you're kind of informed and... and, and can really understand all of the, the context to what's happening in those meetings and, and things. You know, I'm thinking of the, you know, thank goodness I have a little bit of governmental county background, but also, you know, the, the phase two MSBA training on, you know, some of the different aspects of, you know, uh, school finance and, and things. I mean, those kinds of things are, you carve out the time for them and they're really invaluable and helping you to be a better board member. Um, so it, it definitely does um, uh, again, just, you know, it, it's manageable, but it's, you know, definitely something that takes some time to get into a good rhythm with.
Sounds a lot like teaching.
Types of board assignments too. So like we're members of MSBA, so then we have somebody who attends those monthly meetings. Um, there's a lot of acronyms, so um, and I don't even know what most of them stand for. Um, cause there's.
They give you a book of them.
Yeah, it's something.
Well, you get a book?
You get a book.
Oh, we don't get a book as teachers.
Metropolitan School District, but I don't know what the A means. Association, okay. So the Association of Metropolitan School Districts is another one that we have a board representative attending those monthly meetings.
Attend a Burnsville Chamber of Commerce Policy Committee meetings once a month. Yeah.
And then we're a member of Intermediate District 917. So that is a, a, a board commitment that I sit on right now um, as a board representative. So I have a whole other slate of school board function.
And the Festival and Fire muster, that's another, that's another assignment.
Foundation, Hall of Fame.
Yep.
Yeah, so State High School League.
Yep.
Again, you know, we, we split those up. Yeah, everybody has to go to the foundation 191. It's not everybody going, it's, it's that's how it stays meaningful is that we have representatives and then report back to the board.
And I think we kind of touched on this, because also the committee assignments can take up a fair amount of time, especially certain ones at certain times of the year. Um, we have the policy committee and the legislative committee that meet once a month, typically about an hour. Um, and then the negotiations committee, which is, which is, can be some years, no time. Uh, but when you're in the heat of negotiations, I know we took multiple days off from our, from our day jobs last winter and spring when we were in doing arbitration with our, with our teacher union. Um, and we had to be present for those meetings. And so we would take multi, an entire day off and go into St. Paul for the all-day arbitration. And um, so that is definitely something to be prepared for the possibility of happening at some point, exactly. Although we all hope it doesn't happen again anytime soon.
Um, I was thinking I was going to ask. Hmm, it's gone. Um, so I guess the other thing I would want to know is um, I know that, I know Rachel and I know Anne Marie, you're new. What made you guys want to be a part of the board?
Do you want me to go first?
My first last name.
Um, I, I just said this, so forgive me, everybody at home who's uh, hearing this again. Um, so I am very active throughout the district. Um, I'm a reading court tutor, I'm on PTL, my kids go um, to school here. And um, we have a parent advocacy group that a few of us started to help parents navigate life in the district. And we thought, hey, wouldn't it be nice if, if we had a voice on that board kind of thing? And it just turns out I was the one who had the means to, to do it and the, and the time to commit. So here I am.
And you know, for me, it's really, you know, I've always wanted uh, to have a chance to serve, to serve the community. And I think that local, you know, that, that serving and getting involved locally is the place that can make the most impact and really make the most difference. And um, and so, and with the kids, I mean, my kids in the district, I mean, you know, Scott and Jordan um, graduated with Maddie and, and that um, you know, that uh, being, and so, you know, the schools is, is the way to make some of the most important kind of impact is what's happening with our students and what's happening in our schools. Um, and so it was my way of, of really serving and giving back. And I was really wanting to be involved and to lend whatever perspectives and things that I could.
Right. Right. I don't think I have any more. I think I'm good. So.
Well, um, oops. Um, thank you for your time and we appreciate your commitment to service and interest in this position. Uh, please note that board action for fulfilling this vacancy will occur during the regular board meeting on February 13th, 2025. You do not need to be present for this meeting. Um, and you can watch the results online. However, in the event that the board is deadlocked during the selection process, you may wish to be present for additional follow-up questions. After the resolution to fill the vacancy is passed, there's a 30-day waiting period. The selected candidate will begin their service on March 27th, 2025. Um, once again, thank you for your time and hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
I will not be able to attend tomorrow night. Um, I have parent teacher conferences.
Oh.
So, so yeah, that's what I'll be doing, so.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Enjoy those conferences.
I will.
I have great kids.
Welcome Tyler. I'm Anna Werbe, I'm the current board chair. And to start, we're going to go around and introduce all the other board members. So we'll start with Anne Marie.
Hi Anne Marie Anderson, it's nice to see you.
Yes, thank you.
Leslie Chester.
Abigail Alt.
Scott Hume.
Rachel McClellan.
So I'm going to kick it off with the first interview question. Oh, I suppo- wait, no, I'm supposed to read, I'm sorry, I know. I'm, I'm very like disorganized this evening, I apologize. So. I'll share a brief overview of the interview process. We will begin by allowing you a brief opening statement, followed by nine questions. You will have five minutes to respond to most questions and will also be provided with an opportunity to ask questions of the board. You will find the questions posted on the screen behind us. Before we begin, I also want to share a brief overview of the selection process. Tomorrow, February 13th, at our regular board meeting, when we reach the agenda item to appoint a new board member, I will ask board members if there is a nomination for the first applicant. Following a nomination, the chair will then ask board members if there is a second for the same. If there's a second, I will ask if there are any other nominations. Then, once the nominations are complete, we'll vote by roll call. The same process will be repeated for the remainder of the applicants. Once a clear winner receives a majority of votes, the board will take full action on a resolution to appoint the applicant. The appointee will be sworn in during our regular Board of Education meeting on March 27th, 2025, at 6:30 PM and will join the board at the dais and begin their service that same evening. If there are a tie vote, in which the board is deadlocked, then no nomination, then the nomination process would be closed and the board would reopen the application process and welcome all candidates to reapply. So let's go ahead and begin. At this time, you have five minutes to share an opening statement.
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity and the opportunity to meet all of you and interview for the, for the open vacancy. I've been Burnsville resident for 13 years now, moved here in 2012 after finishing my graduate school program in Madison. And we've loved every minute we've spent here and we're especially impressed by the community feel, feel that came with the schools. So our older son Xavier is currently a sophomore at Burnsville High School. He went to Gideon Pond and Nicollet Middle School. And our younger son Lyndon is eight and he currently goes to Gideon Pond as well as a third grader. And immediately, we felt it was different here than what we were used to. My wife and I met in Madison, but we both grew up in much smaller towns and went to small school districts. And then the opportunity to come somewhere larger and still that there's still that community feel to such a larger district and all the opportunities that come with that has been very impressive. And my wife started her career as a special education teacher and so her sensing that as well was very reassuring and kind of a selling point of this is definitely a great place to be for us. And so the opportunity with this opening up, very much just in where things continue to go with the district. I think we're at a very interesting time and at crossroads for public education in a lot of ways. Uncertainty around funding from the federal level, from the state level, all the things that come along with that and trying to continue to evolve in a very fast, rapidly changing economy as well. So I think the pathways program that we have is super critical and very important to the district success and ultimately the success of the kids in the district going forward. I think it's been a great evolution. If I look back a long time ago now, but when I was in high school, it was very much either you really liked the school stuff and you're trying to go to a four-year college, or you're just trying to get to the end of this and get out of here and get a degree and go on your way and be done with the school thing. But I think recognizing that there's much more to it than that and we're preparing students to be successful, whether they want to do that four-year college, which is a very viable route, but also trade schools, technical colleges, things like that, to go into a certain career path or to enter the workforce immediately. And so that we're preparing all students for that. Critical to me and I think one of the major things we have to do as a district is make sure we keep that going. Again, like to the motto of the district and really the overall vision of every student being future-ready is super important.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
So I'll start with the first question. What qualities do you think are the most important in a school board member and how do you reflect those qualities?
Sure. I think the first one is just a passion for general, for public education and the outcomes for the students and the kids and the community at large that they get from having a strong education system. I think first of all, you have to care about that. And so I tend, when I get into things, I jump into them and whether it's my career, things with kids, family, like we're in, we're all in and we're really going to go into that. But I think another important quality is open communication style and sort of that inclusiveness of ideas and bringing things together, really creating opportunities that will benefit all parties involved in that. And so I've had, been lucky enough to have extensive leadership experience in different organizations, both large publicly traded corporations, also smaller organizations and private organizations. So leadership opportunities there where I found that has been the most effective is making sure those channels of communication are always open. We talk about not only what we're going to do, but why we're doing it, why the need is there to do that and bring in those different types of ideas. And I've also, even in non-leadership positions, had the opportunity to be sort of an internal consultant in different companies and different roles. So I'd be working on 10 different projects at a time with eight different teams. And I would constantly bring them together and I ran a lot of workshops with them, but it was a lot of times the biggest benefit they got out of that was we actually brought them together for once to talk through things and get ideas out in the open and challenge different assumptions. That was usually a lot more valuable to them than the actual output I gave them of the report or the next steps or things like that. There was those opportunities, so a lot of very, very captivating throughout my career. And I think those are a super important quality for something like a school board with the community at large and the taxpayers, as the students and then also the staff and teachers to find things that work for everybody going forward.
So how do you personally value public education and what do you see as the value of public education in our community?
I place tremendous value on public education. So as I mentioned, I grew up in a small town in Wisconsin. My high school senior class was 107 students. So I'm a little envious actually when we did the tour with Xavier at the high school. I'm like, I had played lacrosse and done some of these things, but we didn't have them. But you, nothing but fond memories of the public education system. My grandmother was a high school teacher. One of my uncles was a special education teacher at my high school and our softball and basketball coach. As I mentioned, my wife started a career as a cross-categorical special education teacher in a high school. And then even from there, then choosing to go to the University of Wisconsin for both undergrad and then later went back for my MBA there. And there will never be another place or institution that will impact me more, open more opportunities for me or shape me as a person than the University of Wisconsin will and that campus in Madison. Tremendous opportunities, both career, but also just learning from a life standpoint as a public institution. And so I've been super large advocates of the university. My social media will show that, non-stop stuff about that. But I think it's just absolutely critical and I think if we look back to when we were really thriving country and thriving with the, with the middle class, that was built on public education being strong and having those opportunities for all students regardless of where they're going to go after high school and what that next step is for them, preparing them to move on and help the community at large. It's the value of that. And I think in, within the Burnsville community, I think it's been, you know, like I said, it's a tremendous family, community aspect to all of the schools that we've been with, whether it's Gideon Pond, Nicollet, the high school. You can feel that and I think the, you know, that all the educators I know in the district are so committed and to try to make that difference and actually help those students, that's super impressive. And I think that's how it comes together from what I've seen in 191.
Third question. Describe your understanding of the decision-making process for public school boards and then explain your approach would be in handling decisions that were made before you joined the board that you do not agree with.
Sure. As to the decision-making process, I know it's always open up to public input, number one. So we get plenty of feedback or the opportunity, at least for the public, to bring feedback to the board. There's also committee structure and areas of focus for people on the board to look at and sort of bring information together so people can make informed decisions. And then obviously voting as a group ultimately on what those things are from a process standpoint. In terms of decisions in the past I would disagree with, you know, I've been very happy with the decisions that are made and some of the changes that I've made since we've moved into this district. Certainly there will always be things disagree with that, but those were decisions made at the time by the people making those decisions and they were doing that with the best information they had in front of them. So playing revisionist history and trying to go back on that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I think just going forward from there and it's really, you know, what makes sense going forward. Do we adjust that and make changes to it going forward? Or the next time around, there's a decision to be made on that topic or in that area, we revisit it and we evaluate the information we have in front of us now, which is hopefully more in-depth and better and perhaps make a different decision.
Thank you.
So as a board, we do speak as one voice and the board has to make decisions where members of the community they have strong views on the subject being decided. Please describe your approach in sharing your views either in person or online, you know, outside of board meetings, you know, should you be a member of the board.
Sure. You know, a lot of it ties back to, I was previously describing, that one communication and the idea of laying it out there. And if you're just making decisions in the vacuum and this is what we decided and that's it and not allowing all the access to what went into that and some of the other information. So I'm very transparent with that and here are the different factors that led to a decision. And then ultimately, I think that's, again, trying to sell it that way of there is, we came to the decision. There's going to be a lot of decisions that are going to be controversial and you're never going to have 100% obviously of the public and the community behind all of those decisions. But if you're able to explain kind of the background, share that information that was used in making the decision and then ultimately what the benefit we see in that decision is going to be. That, you know, the reason we've decided this is we see XYZ as the results going forward from this and kind of the background of why we came to that decision, but also ultimately why that decision we feel is the best route forward and what it's actually going to gain for us and how it's going to help ultimately our students, the faculty and the community at large.
All right, my question. If you could describe from your perspective the difference between governance and management, specifically as it relates to a potential role on the school board?
Sure. Yeah, so I'm used to answering this question in terms of management and leadership, but same kind of idea. You know, from a government standpoint, there are certain ways, the things, obviously rules we have to follow, things that have to be complied with, guidelines, all of those things from a government, from a governance standpoint. That's sort of the, the rules of the road, if you will. And I think, you know, from the management side of it, it's a little bit more of, you know, stylistically, I like to go about things that we've been talking through and then really trying to make sure we're facilitating things and facilitating discussions, facilitating decisions in the most open and most fruitful manner possible. So you, within, obviously you have to follow the governance, but then in terms of how you're actually managing the process and all of that, you're trying to do that in the most efficient way, the most productive way that you can, given the, given the overall framework that you're working in.
Great. Could you tell me a little bit more about how your background relates to the ability to oversee the organization of our school district?
Sure.
Especially as it relates to governance?
Sure, absolutely. So I have been a director of marketing for a software company that was actually in the higher education space. And so there was a lot of regulatory things that go along with that that we have to follow. Overall, it was a division of 26 people that I was overseeing. So a mixture of the top-down guidance and also delegating to my team leaders in those situations and, you know, making clear that the expectation was, these are the things that we have to follow and we have to be within these guidelines and these frameworks. And then helping them, what's the best way I can help you to actually be effective and do all the things that you want to do and be successful within that framework is how I've done that. Currently, I'm the Vice President and Chief Marketing and Strategy Officer at Novation Credit Union. I've been in that role for about 16 months. Last year, we actually had a really exciting effort to make really the organization's first strategic plan. So we built a three-year strategic plan that we just put into place or became effective in January. So we're up and running with that, but that was very much an opportunity to look at and good timing for it. Just as a little bit of background on our credit union, we've traditionally, we've been around for 70 years and we're traditionally the 3M credit union. So US employees of 3M, we're members of Novation. Lots of changes happened in the last five, six years. So we used to have two branches in the 3M headquarters in Oakdale and that has gone, gone away with COVID, there's not enough foot traffic to support that. 3M spun off their healthcare business, Salventum, last year. So we're now also a credit union for them and now we're also community-based, so the entire community of Washington County. So Stillwater, Cottage Grove, Woodbury are all eligible to join the credit union as well. So a much different picture. So we spent a lot of time as a leadership group. I was leading our overall executive group on going down different paths, looking at different things. We also had to really do a lot of education with our board of directors, given our background. Most of our board is 3M, former 3Mers or current 3Mers. And so their, their even understanding of how a credit union works as a not-for-profit, member-owned organization compared to what they're used to from a quarterly results standpoint is a lot of like, why don't you do this? Well, you can't do that, it doesn't work that way. And even the metrics we're looking at were different. So it was a great opportunity to really look at where the organization needed to go, educate the board on that, to get them on board and bring them along with it. And then for all of our members as well, to show them we have a plan for the future to continue with sustainable growth and things like that. So strategic planning, very much part of what I've been doing. So not only in this role, but in previous ones as well. Annual marketing plans, strategy plans for organizations. I've been doing that for quite some time and actually enjoy it.
School district finances are complex and this board has had to face many challenging budgetary decisions over the years. What would your approach to this be?
You know, it's, it's certainly a balancing act, especially when it's a school district. It's very, you know, very similar, I would say, to what we face as a member-owned credit union where, you know, there's certain levels, the better we do, the better it is for all of our member owners. So that's kind of the nice thing is we don't have external shareholders to worry about with that. But there's also, you know, there's different metrics we look at where, once you're doing so well and you get above certain metrics, like we're not doing enough to put it back into the membership. It's time to invest in more technology for them, it's time to invest in training for our staff, it's time to invest in new solutions or even better products and promotions that we can offer our members. I think there's kind of that similar balance from a school district standpoint of our outcomes we're trying to achieve. trying to achieve that are set out in the strategic plan. Obviously, that requires funding. But ultimately, there is only so much funding. What we have from the state, what we have from local taxes, the small amount we get from federal on that side of things. And ultimately, you know, that has to, have to look at that and prioritize where some of it's going to go. And ultimately, that can lead to prioritizing some of the different priorities that we actually have and some of those strategic plan elements, which ones are going to give us the most, you know, the most bang and how we're going to do that. So like, reprioritizing is a common theme there. But then also ultimately, you know, what's going to get the best advantage for the most number of students while also treating our faculty fairly, and giving the community ultimately something that they can be proud of as a district that they're funding with their tax money.
Awesome. Next, from your perspective, what is the time commitment for board members?
Well, certainly, obviously, the two weeks, two meetings per month. But I would imagine probably 20 to 40 hours per month of going through things, preparing for the meetings, reviewing things, committee, action, different things like that would be my expectation.
Okay. Thank you.
In under two minutes, what would your elevator pitch be for ISD 191 to encourage families to enroll the district?
Mr. Marketing Day.
Yes. Under two minutes, though, man, that's.
Short elevator ride.
Paying for the, yeah, paying for the Super Bowl ad. You know, ultimately, I think the idea of future-proof, or future-ready is super critical. And I think that's something that can apply as a theme for the district as a whole. You know, that's looking at, you know, there are going to be challenges in the future with staffing. Teaching is a very difficult job right now, and many teachers I know burned out, like, how are we going to deal with that? And make sure, you know, for the district to be future-ready, we've got to have a really good handle on that going forward of how we not only attract talent, but retain the talent that we have from that standpoint. And I think the district is committed to doing that, and hopefully be committed for that, committed to that as a board. So that's something I think families could really rely on and look forward to in 191. And then the future-ready aspect for the children themselves, like we talked about, they're going to have input in being able to choose where they go. As I look back, you know, years ago, going through high school, I think the most challenge, the most frustrating thing to me, even though it was overall a great experience, and probably the thing that was the biggest disservice to the most number of students that you could do is just having everybody going through the same thing at the same speed. It just doesn't make sense. And so 191 offers you this pathways option where not only is it going to prepare you for whatever you want to do after high school, for your college trade, go right into the workforce, but in getting there, you're going to have choice on your own as a student to be able to choose. Choose that path, number one, but then also what you focus on within those paths and really get yourself ready for the next steps. And then ultimately, all of that really makes the communities in 191 future-ready by being able to do that. You're really fostering the opportunity for people to enter the workforce or go on to higher ed and still want to stay here and remain and be a part of the community as they go forward, grow older, and then raise their own kids, hopefully in the district in the future.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. What questions do you have for us? And any final thoughts that you have for us before we end the interview?
Just one question would be, just in general, what you each they see as the biggest challenges facing the district over the next two to five years?
One of us can take one.
We might have to cap this at two minutes.
So I would say it's the area of overlap between the gap in funding, combined with legislative mandates that just exacerbate that. And trying to navigate that in a way, to your point, where we are doing the best that we can to serve our students.
Yeah, I know one example of that, even on the, from the credit union side, we're aware of the legislation that passed a couple of years ago to mandate financial education for all high schoolers. And then they just kind of left it. There's no guidance whatsoever on that. And I know the Minnesota Credit Union Network is actually trying to continually weigh in on that and check on that of like, what, what does that look like? And how can we even actually help as credit unions to maybe foster some of that curriculum and do some of that with our commitments of financial literacy?
Didn't we used to have a credit union?
We did have a credit union by the Activity Center.
High school, yeah.
Yep. And it was a partnership with a local credit union that was acquired. And the acquisition, the party that acquired the credit union was not interested in maintaining the partnership.
Was that recent? Because I feel like.
It was with the, it was pre-COVID.
It was around, around.
Right around COVID.
It was still here when I was on the board. So.
Yep.
It was right around that hole.
Yeah.
When COVID started or right before.
Yep.
I even been during the pandemic.
That, that partnership was started with Bill Riker, who was the president or CEO of the credit union at the time. So.
I was going to say the exact, exact same thing you were going to say, like, none of our.
None of our, yeah. The funding, the decrees, I mean, it just floors me that the rate
of inflation and the amount of funding we get, they're just so out of balance. And the level of importance that this country, the lack of importance this country places on education is very disappointing. And I don't know. It, it makes it hard because you want to do so much more, but there's so little you have to do it with. But that makes us, you know, like, where we're trying to work with what we have and finding, cutting, you know, finding little loopholes here and there, like, how can we get money here? And how can we get money there? And doing the best that we can with what we've got, kind of thing.
Yep. Creativity.
Yes, creativity. Yep.
Sure.
And may I, I think, just to add on to what you said, I think sometimes people equate funding with, like, teacher salaries or administrator salaries. And the fact of the matter is, and this came up in our budget discussions last year, just the medical, the health insurance premium increase was more than the increase in our funding from the state last year.
Sure.
So we were already behind the curve just because of increases in healthcare premiums that have, you know, very little to do with the actual salaries of the people who work here.
Sure.
In addition, we renewed our transportation contracts, and that included an increase too because of inflation. So keeping, keeping up with, you know, inflation, I think all of us fault our electric bills and our gas bills go up. Same with the school district.
Sure.
So I think it's, it's that piece. And then however more we can continue to push or advocate our legislators to really start funding at those levels that we need them to, and holding them accountable to it.
Sure.
And I think it, you know, so it's like, we're being louder with our voice in the district, but it has to be coupled with all the rest of the districts with the same voice. Yeah. If we, if that, if that came apart, then we wouldn't have any of the other things they have to have to be concerned about.
That would solve a lot of things.
I think the other thing that is kind of the elephant in the proverbial room is just we've had declining enrollment for so many years, and it's continued. And yes, it has plateaued a bit, but it's still happening and is projected to continue. So I think that's, to answer the other part of your question, I think that's a second challenge that, yes, it connects to funding, but it's not, there are other reasons that aren't funding-related that it's important to keep. We want to keep our students in our district. I think most families, from my conversations, who have kids in the district have very positive things to say about the experiences that they're, that they and their families have had here. I know, speaking as a parent myself, that's absolutely been my case for the last, we've had kids in the district now for 20 years. So 21, it means our 21st school year this year. So, yeah. I, yeah.
And on that point, you know, with, you know, there are a couple of different reasons why enrollment is declining, of course, right? We have, we have students, families enrolling their students out, out of the district for, you know, families make their choices. We also have an aging pop, a growing aging population that really enjoys living in Burnsville. And they, they don't want to move, and they don't have any place to move to. And so the opportunity for new families to come in while it's there, you know, it's that interchange of, you know, plus and minus. And, and, you know, just the way demographics are right now for the state of Minnesota, you know, the demographer projects, you know, for the next 10 years, overall, you know, student population will continue to shrink as, you know, the upper part of the funnel continues to get larger.
Sure.
And families that used to have three or four kids on average now have one or two kids on.
Correct.
Yes.
Choosing not to.
After a couple of decades of that, that also impacts things like the number of kids that are literally alive to go to school, right?
The birth rate has dropped.
The birth rate has dropped significantly over the last 30 or 40 years. Exactly.
So in part, you know, and, and that's, you know, to.
All these things tie together.
To walk a fine line, housing stock impacts enrollment.
Yeah, right. And we're sort of geographically hemmed in in Burnsville, too, from like, there's not a population growth.
There's not a lot, there's not any undeveloped land.
Exactly. It's not like for Farmington where it just can keep going. We've got our borders and.
And the buildings, we're building our senior living.
Right.
Yes.
Got to make room in those single-family homes.
Yep.
But I think also, you know, kind of to dovetail off kind of a little bit with what they've said in kind of, you know, I think everyone that's, that's come to, you know, talk today, I think there's that, that perception kind of thing. And working on, on really getting those messages out there about, you know, hearing from our students.
Yes.
And the kinds of experiences that they're having. And, you know, that, that challenge of getting that message out there in, in ways that people really, you know, hear and absorb and, you know, about all of those good things that are happening at 191. And that, you know, there are opportunities to excel for all students, you know, within the district. And that it's, it's just getting that, that communication out there in a way that's, that's effective is, you know, I think a challenge. The information is there.
Sure.
How, how do you lead that, you know, thirsty horse to the water?
And there's a lot of opportunity without the diversity of the community and like all those different experiences that they've had in the district being really, really great. I mean, to be honest, when we moved here 12, 13 years ago, and we'd ask people about the schools, it was a kind of a transition time here in Burnsville with population and things like that. And we heard a lot of, used to be really good. We're still pretty good. Used to be really good. But eventually, we, you know, after a few months, we sort of decoded that. And that was some people's way of saying it'd become more diverse. Now, this was 12, 13 years ago. And I think thankfully, perspective on that have shifted quite a bit. But I think that does lend to the strength, like you were saying, of like, we do have, and that's a very much a strength of, of the district. And I think telling those different stories and the different experiences that different people have in the district. We certainly saw that as a strength when we moved here, having both come from small towns in Wisconsin. There was no diversity in the high schools that my wife and I went to. And then Madison was obviously, it's still, Madison, Wisconsin, still not like a bastion of diversity, but much more diverse than where we grew up. But then we bought our first house in Cambridge, which was 20 miles east of Madison. It was a town of 1,000 people, and we actually lived across, directly across the street from the high school there. And my wife, being a teacher, and we had just had our first son, he was like two, and she's like, we are moving before he gets to high school because he needs to have a more diverse, something like this, wanted to be somewhere bigger and things like that. So that was just kind of an interesting thing that stuck with us when we first moved here, was people's, like, how they would describe the school district of, that seems a little bit odd, because our experience as we got into the schools was these are fantastic schools, and they're excellent, and fantastic educators working at them. So we kind of decoded that a little bit of like, some, all right, that was some people's way of saying that, like, the face of the district has changed, and of the student body and things like that. And so, but I think that now we're very much more of a position of, on that, to use that and show that it does work for everybody and is very inclusive and does offer those different, different pathways for, for people.
For sure.
Yep.
Good.
I don't think so. Thank you much.
I'd just like to say thank you for your time, and we appreciate your commitment to service and interest in this position. Please note that board action for filing, filling the vacancy occurred during the regular board meeting on February 13th, 2025. You do not need to be present for this meeting and can watch the results online. However, in the event that the board is deadlocked during the selection process, you may wish to be present for additional follow-up questions. After the resolution to fill the vacancy is passed, there is a 30-day waiting period. The selected candidate will begin their service on March 27th, 2025. Once again, thank you, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening. Not much of it left.
I, I don't often get out of reading to our eight-year-old because it picks me, like, I feel bad for mom because it picks me every single night. I get the way they're out tonight. So it's time to get back. Oh, I actually have some, it's the second evening. I'll get back and he's asleep, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.